Conversation with each of these department heads.
I think it really depends on how the question is phrased. Are we asking them if thirty-five percent is adequate for their needs? Or are we asking them if they think they should not have to carry a reserve balance? That I think that some, some people are of the belief that having a reserve balance is not necessary and it's wasteful and that money's just sitting there for no reason. And there's some people who feel like, you know, that's your savings account for when times get back.
So the question is Suzanne, do the other commissioners want to get that information or not?
I think, go ahead Jean.
I think so. I think it's information that's useful. I mean, it's no such thing as overload on information, so I'd be in favor of getting it, yes.
Okay. I really think we want to be careful about how we phrase it though.
So we're gonna give, we're gonna give Trish a script. You don't think she can do that?
Oh, no. I think she can do that, but I think we need to be careful about how it's phrased, that we're not just saying, well, how much do you think you ought to have? I think if we ask, like, for an example, road and bridge, you know, how much needs to be in there? What is a reasonable amount to expect if you lose a bridge?
And how it would be utilized. So it currently says a minimum level of thirty-five percent and not to exceed fifty, fifty percent of the operational budget. So to put that in outside of percentages, so do you want to have a reserves with a maximum of only six months paid bills? Because that's what that says.
And do we want to have a minimum of like, three months? Three months is not very long. You look how long COVID's gone on. And do we want to allow every department to say, oh, I want this much, I want this much? Do we want to say it's okay to have a, a different amount for every department? I'm not really sure that that's a good idea. I think that's a decision the commissioners need to make and not have it be up to every department. Because then what happens when you have a department that says, oh, no, I only think I need one month worth of paid bills? And then that department head changes and suddenly, not only did they not have one month paid bills, but they're, come to find out, they didn't have anything.
The question before us was Trish wanted the commissioners' approval to follow my recommendation. If the commissioners feel that that question has to be answered, then answer it. We don't have to discuss one percent, thirty-five percent. All I was saying, and it was in regard to complaints received from department heads in all sorts of areas about how this board functions and interacts with them. So it was soliciting their input, period. And everything you said Suzanne, will have to involve their input, or we can impose an arbitrary number based on our opinion about what their needs are. So it was to go to the people responsible for making their budget proposal and for them to tell us what they think. And then we could decide whether or not that's appropriate. I got it. It's not that big a deal, but it's turned into one. And if the administrator is not capable of doing that without full board approval, fine. But I would assume this falls into common sense and judgment. Any comments on that?
No, I guess you've already got two people that agree, so it doesn't even matter.
Okay, then all I do is have to just answer Trish a simple question. Does the board approve of John's request?
I don't think it's a good idea, no.
Okay. Jean?
I'm not opposed to the request as much as I am just making sure that, and Trish knows how to handle this. I'm not worried about that part as far as the statement. Just make sure it's handled the same all the way across the board, you know? That'd be my biggest thing.
So we don't have an answer yet. Suzanne, suppose, I'll tell you what, Trish, I'm gonna make it easy for you. I withdraw my request, okay? You hear me, Trish?
Yes.
Okay. I don't care what you do. So you got two, right there. There's your board, there's your board consent. And I'm gonna also go to another statement you made, that somebody said that we should cover the wall with a TV. Was that person made?
I actually think, it was actually, had conversations about the owl in the work session and that was done in the work session, that it would cover the wall in its entirety or as big as possible, something to those words, when we discussed the owl.
Okay. So that was not me specifically?
Uh, that I believe. Don't ask me who said in the back of the room that as big as possible, it was in a work session.
Okay. And I saw comments on that about expensive, what have you. I was concerned because I didn't understand that we were gonna try to cover the wall with TV, that we were gonna try to get as large enough a screen so that whoever's in the room could see it clearly. And we talked about that in the context of the current TV, et cetera. And it was not adequate, obviously, and setting up a little computer, I think the current TV wouldn't even work, and having a laptop set over there, the commissioners and others could not see who was on the screen.
Correct. It would be big enough for everyone to see. So, and I, and I think, at that point, I told you guys that I would be emailing and make sure everything's, everyone's okay with the size of that TV, which I just took the largest and emailed it out. To cover the entire wall is kind of the wording.
And actually, I wasn't, I didn't mean to question anybody's authority on that when I asked that question. I just saw an eighty-five inch TV. It sounded really large for anywhere in this size room. But I think a sixty-plus TV would be perfect and, and I, I didn't know how much it was. I said expensive because I figured the bigger you get, the more detailed you get with a TV, it's gonna cost a bit more money. But questionable for me to decide, it was just a question.
Well, and this morning, Jean and I kind of measured and kind of held up a tape measure and, and kind of the fifty-five, sixty-ish range seemed like it would be adequate.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and look for various different ones and email out fifty to sixty-ish and make sure the board is happy with them and see which one you prefer.
The, uh, the issue is, are we going to be, is it going to accomplish our purpose? As I understand, the purpose is to be able to see the screen clearly enough that we know, that we can see whatever's up there, whether it's a screenshot presentation or individuals speaking. Is that correct?
Correct. You, it would just be visual only. The sound will come out of the owl.
Right. So that, the audio is not the issue. The issue is the size of the screen and how big a screen do we need in that room to be able to see it clearly, wherever we position it? And we've talked about the back wall, about the corner, we've talked about different locations. I don't know if any decision was made on any of that. And it may be one of those where we have to move it around and try it. I don't know.
Well, and I guess if we're looking at being able to totally see a full presentation, that, you know, I'm visualizing a PowerPoint presentation, it depends on the presentation because sometimes, sometimes you can see, or sometimes the slides they put in there are small, and so I don't know if we want, if for that purpose, if we want to go bigger, or if it'll feel like you're sitting in a movie theater and if you have, have it set like on Zoom and you have one person's face that's eighty-five inches big. If that's going to be, um, a little much, I don't know.
Well, again, to try to bring some clarity to it, first of all, we know that we don't have to have a screen that takes a whole screen on that. We can also, we can do the tile, if that's your concern about having a giant head talking to you. As far as seeing the, the text on a slide, we understand it's a responsibility of the presenter to make sure that they format it in a way people can see it, okay? I don't know how large a screen we need to do this. I would assume that we could figure it out. And for us to arbitrarily pick fifty, sixty, eighty-five, or any other number, fine. It's not about covering a wall, it's about being able to see what's going on. And whatever works there. I also assume that we're able to cover this under COVID funds. Is that correct, Trish?
We should be able to. The only reason we're needing to do this is due to COVID.
Okay. So, is it appropriate for us here to decide how big a screen we need?
John, I'm wondering, would that be a question that maybe we could call WSB and, because the sizes are really, what that it do to us as far as deflection and stuff?
You could ask someone. If WSB's the expert, I would ask them. I don't know how many feet we need from our table to the back wall, and I don't know how big a depiction we all need, depends on our eyesight, I suppose, to be able to accomplish it. Or we can all sit there on our laptops, but what we're trying to get away from was exactly that. Uh, you know, so if you need to have, if you can have, let's just say nine tiles depicted on a screen, how big will each tile be? How many inches, square inches is that? We could do that with the tech, okay? And then, how big a tile do we need at ten feet or twelve feet, however, whatever that distance is, to be able to see it? You know, that's really what we're talking about. Again, it's basic math. How big a tile, how big a depiction do we need to be able to identify folks? You know, we could not see it at six to ten feet on a laptop. We've already demonstrated that. If that had been a thirty-inch TV screen, would that have been adequate for what we were doing at the time? I don't know. But if we're gonna put it on the back wall, or any wall, and assuming it's twelve feet from the observers, how big a depiction do we need? Yeah, we could figure out how many square inches around a sixty-inch diagonal screen.
We are, we're roughly twenty feet from our side of the table to the back wall. I just measured it out. It's pretty close, so.
Okay. I don't, I don't know how big a sixty-inch diagonal is because that diagonal doesn't tell me what the other two sides are.
Yeah. Yeah, you're gonna be, you know, the TV box itself's gonna be six to eight inches larger, I'm sure. But what I'm worried about is, like I said, is if those boxes can't show up and be big enough where we can see them, or read the name on them or whatever, is it gonna do it good? So I think the room may as well run down to WSB and probably get some of those answers for us.
Okay. And, you know, the old, um, the hypotenuse is equal to the sum of the squares of the right angle, right?
Right.
Times two. Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I don't know what the side dimensions are. Sixty-inch diagonal is, is probably not a good measure for our purposes, but let's just assume that screen is four by five. That's twenty square feet. Okay, and if you get nine tiles, I'm assuming nine, let's just pick that number for now, that is almost two square feet per tile. Actually, it wouldn't be four by five. It'd probably be three and a half by four. Okay? So there, there we're looking at fourteen square feet of screen area, divided by nine, gives you still over a foot per tile, setting where you are, and you see something a foot big back there in the back of the room. Can you see it?
Yeah, I, you know, you could read that little sinus back there in the wall pretty plain, and it's an eight and a half by eleven, so.
Okay. So a twelve-inch square would be more than adequate for visibility purposes?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Okay. So we're talking maybe a sixty-inch diagonal screen?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good one to start with. I really think that'd probably be an appropriate size to start with there anyway.
And say, do we want not, Trish, to order a sixty-inch diagonal screen? With the appropriate hardware to install it? Not installed, but connected? Because we're using HDMI or Wi-Fi to connect to that, we'd have to think about that.
I already have that hardware purchased in here in the office.
Okay, how many feet of HDMI cable do you have?
Two fifteen feet.
Thirty feet?
Two at fifteen feet. So one is needed for on top of the desk, the other one for the TV. It is not recommended by WSB to run the thirty feet from the table to the back wall, so it'll be two laptops.
So we'll have a separate laptop within fifteen feet of the screen if we're using HDMI rather than a Wi-Fi connection?
Correct.
Okay. But there's a potential to use Wi-Fi, isn't there?
Only if we want to do, they, they call it a mirror from a cell phone or another laptop, which still is needed, another laptop or a cell phone. It's a mirror image, I think it was called.
And I know that I've tried that on my TV and it wasn't super successful. I don't know if that's just my TV.
There, I think currently they don't make any TVs that can accept the Zoom app. That could change in the future, but for right now, there are none.
Okay. So in that case, we have to have something connected to the system that we then just use the TV as a, as a second monitor on whatever it is we hook up to it.
We would be using two laptops or, like I said, a cell phone will work as well.
Okay. So the cell phone is a receiver, it's, it is connected to Zoom as a separate device, and then we're just using the TV as a repeater of that display?
Correct.
Okay. So is a consensus that we do a sixty-inch TV?
I think it would be fine.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. But now, Trish, I guess the commissioners are, agree that you can purchase a sixty-inch TV and, and solicit the hardware. Which would include the mounting hardware.
Um, you know, on the mounting hardware, if you're going to stick it to the wall, I'm kind of concerned about putting holes in the wall, that I'm kind of wondering if we want to do something like put it on the TV cart and put it back there and try that for a little while and see if that's where we want it? Or move it around and see what works the best before we poke holes in the, in the stone walls or concrete or whatever they are?
I believe that's a frame wall if it's on the back wall, correct?
No, it's not.
You mean the wall between Randy's office and ours is not a frame wall?
I, my, my best understanding is that it is not. I guess I'll have to check on that, but I don't think it is. But I think it would be wise to try it for a while on the cart and then decide if we, where we want to put it before we order a, a stand or how we want to attach it.
Okay, so we put on a cart and you have to remove audience chairs if we're gonna locate in the bathroom.
Well, the whole point is that we can't have audience anyway. I'm not saying leave it like that forever. I'm saying figure out where we want it in the room. And if we want it on that back wall, or if we want it diagonally in the corner, or if we want it to the side, or if we do want to keep it on a mobile platform.
In which case, we need to buy a mobile platform to do this, right?
What I'm saying is use the TV cart we have for now, and then when we determine how we want it, then we can purchase what we need to do it.
Will the sixty-inch monitor fit on the TV cart we have now?
The, um, those TVs come with, or at least mine did, came with a stand that was rather, like in the middle. And you hook it, hook it to that stand, and the stand was probably, uh, maybe, if I remember correctly, like two feet wide or something, but it was in the middle of the TV. I guess we should look at that. But that stand would fit on the TV cart.
So Trish, part of your job is to figure out where the stand that comes with a large screen TV, how wide the feet are on that, will they fit on our existing cart? And then, one of the challenges you're gonna have, if somebody bumps into that thing, is gonna be on the floor.
I'll, uh, pick quite a few sixty inches and send it out on email for you guys.
Okay, well, you need the specs on it.
Yep.
Okay, the footprint?
Yep.
Okay. We're making a decision here based on how you realize that.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I don't know if there's any other way to do it. I think what we'll do is wherever we get the, the sign on the TV or whatever, we need to make sure it's somewhere that, if for some reason we get here and it doesn't look large enough or one-fifth thing, we'd have an option to return it maybe, you know, if it's not open and plugged in, so.
Okay. Well, something else you can do is probably in a few moments, you can go back and tap on that back wall and see if in fact it's foundationally or framed.
It's made, I did that this morning.
It's what?
It's foundationally?
It's in on.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Okay. Fair enough. So Trish, does this give you enough clarity?
Sure. Like I said, I'll go ahead and, uh, look at some options and email it out and confirm that's what the commissioners are wanting.
Okay. We want to know about the dimensions?
All the specs.
And we know, and we want to know about the footprint. How far apart is the stand basis? That'll help us determine whether or not our current rolling around stand is adequate. And then where are we gonna put the lap?
Would you like me to go get Randy for the next subject?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm getting Trish. I, I didn't see you.
He was still there when he was actually gone. Kind of funny when it freezes like that.
Yeah, I heard the delay. It's kind of, it's even more interesting when you hear it in one place and then hear it here also.
And Suzanne, the ag building exemption was something you brought before us.
Yes.
And did you read Randy's email that some of that's covered under state statute?
I read his email and I didn't print it out this morning, but he's gonna talk to us about it, so.
I can go ahead and print it if you like.
I'm gonna turn the computer around so Randy can be on there. Morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon, actually. I'm not sure who's, uh, starting off, but I lost John, John lost the Zoom before and then his cell phone, it was told me he called in, I wouldn't pick it up too good, so. John, are you with us?
I'm with you. And the reason I lost, I just found that my internet connection, sheila, went down.
Oh.
Apparently, the electricity in Montevista went off.
Okay, that explains it. Okay.
So I'm, I'm assuming this is a, I'm answering questions or I'm, I'm not exactly how it worked or that in, sure.
Okay.
All right, Suzanne, explain to you what her concerns are.
Okay.
Okay. Basically, some of my concerns, and I've talked to you about this before, is, um, the way that some of this is written, where it, um, you know, it talks about, um, that the structure may have minimal electricity and, uh, not have any indoor plumbing and that kind of thing.
Okay, we're talking about the waiver form for ag buildings, then that?
Yes.
When, so when somebody's pulling a building permit for an ag building, the form that we're handing them to read and sign?
Correct. And apparently, this is the, the thing that people sign that, um, Dixie is using whenever she, uh, goes and tells somebody, you cannot put that boat in that building at all. And that if you do, you're breaking the law or whatever. But my thought is that if you build an agricultural building for the purpose of housing an agricultural commodity, that that's what you're doing. And, um, some of the wording on here is, I kind of, you know, some of it is a little odd. And, um, the word horticulture just doesn't fit because horticulture is gardening. If you have that big of a building, building for gardening stuff, then it's called farming. But, did you get a copy of what I wanted to change?
No.
Okay. Jean, do you have a copy of that?
I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay. Maybe that would, you know what? Let me wander in there. Okay. And, for some reason, this wall must be turned completely off. Can you turn up your volume completely? No, are you okay?
No.
Are you?
Just need to sit in there.
That's fine. We don't twist things.
Yeah. I'm gonna be a very strong, get away with this. Let me just shut this off.
Or I can take this back and leave it in there? Just leave the meeting? You know, let me just stick this one back in here. Oh, okay. Okay, now.
Uh, echoing.
Maybe we'll try and see. Okay.
Okay, so. I, I'm not opposed to a change if you feel as necessary.
One of my, my biggest concerns is on the electricity. Is um, a potato seller uses a lot of electricity, and this is saying minimal electricity. And so if you're asking somebody sign off on that, that's not really an accurate statement.
That may have been an oversight.
Well, and of course-
Because, because minimal electricity, in most cases, like storages.
Right.
And minimal electricity, now, because per check, early ladder, early ladder.
There.
Cooling system, or mechanical system, so I get that.
Well, and I just think that where it is broad enough to include everything, that would fall in that category, you want it to be that it just includes agricultural buildings and that people aren't using it in a manner that's inconsistent with its intent.
Right.
And-
So that, that, that's what we attempted to do with it for quite a while back. It was updated, remember, we're working on the land use code book? This language about changes in use?
Uh huh.
Because used to state, changes of use were not permitted.
Right.
And that, we were all on that.
Okay.
Um. I found this, I sent you, electrician reached out Friday afternoon, you know, even rescheduled this, and I had sent an email on the week that dues, I didn't have it to get home in the day. But, but I'll just read the section. It, it's um, title thirty, article twenty-eight, which go by. And it states, "The county inspector, as author of section thirty, twenty-eight, fourteen, may be authorized by commissioners to administer enforced building code adopted pursuant to the Department Two. And the Board of County Commissioners makes a reasonable schedule of fees for the issuance of building from the county building inspector. After the adoption of building code, it shall be unlawful to erect, reconstruct, alter, or remodel the structure, well, or in the designated area, except buildings or structures for the sole purpose of providing shelter for agricultural implements, farm products, livestock, poultry, with first obtaining a building permit from the county building inspector." And it goes on, but I think, I think the point, some language about sole purpose of farm product, right, I was just, I choose.
Okay.
You know, so, um-
And so-
But the um, I'll go ahead, please, sir.
Um. So the, and I understand that's the intent of the law, but we don't wanna have the wording where it, you know, like the minimal electricity, that's really probably, okay, maybe it would be the, the necessary amount of electricity for the purpose, or something like that would be better, but-
Yeah, I, I see your point. You don't want a potato farmer to feel like a criminal because he has a lot of electricity in his thing, it's like-
Right, when that's what's required.
I, I, I don't know if anybody's ever taken it that way. I've never certainly never thought of that one, but-
Right.
You know, I, I get the point. I, you know, it's-
But I just don't think we wanna have something that's stated that way.
Okay.
Where, 'cause I feel like you've never taken it that way, but the next building inspector might, might do that.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not saying you're leaving anytime soon, but eventually, eventually. You know, we hope that we can create processes that will be good for-
Yeah.
Great period of time.
I, I agree. This, you know, this was a tool in the toolbox.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was instrumental, I may have typed it up, I don't know. Um, it's been a long, it's been a while. But the whole intent was to prevent this people finding, thinking they found a loophole to skirt around your pleas and regulations. "Oh, let's just call it ag, hey," you know, and, but it's not, they're not even farming, you know? So the intent of the law is to get, is to allow for, you know, these buildings that, that are just shelter for these, these ags, these agricultural products or livestock or whatever. And the rest is subject to the rules, you know, the building code at least.
And I think that's perfectly-
So this, this was our attempt to trying to, you know, we have that, we have that interview at the counter, I tried to, I'm not always there all the time. So we not only try to have that interview, and I always tell them, "I'm not trying to get in your business, I'm just trying to find out how you're gonna use the building because it matters." It matters what path we take. Yeah.
Okay, um, and so uh, thinking on the term of long term and what is required, so it says plumbing facilities. Would you have an issue if we took out plumbing facilities? So, um, because plumbing facility would also be like a sink. And I'm thinking especially where we see COVID, that says you have to wash your hands every time you turn around, and in the winter time, you know, an outhouse doesn't work out so well. So it, does that make it totally improper to have a sink? How, how far do we wanna go? Would it be okay if you kept that somewhat vague? Where basically, all you can put in this building is what is required to do the job that that building is designed to do. But if you have a caving facility, it would probably be nice to have running water.
Well, you know, to have running water, that means you're gonna have a fully heated insulated bill. You know, is it still just a shelter? Uh, or has it become something more for humans, for human habitation? I don't know. I think the intent of the law, and this is my, my, in my, in the intent of the law is your, you know, it's to shelter for
Right.
farm equipment, livestock, farm products, et cetera. Um. Doesn't mean nobody's ever gonna walk in that building.
Right.
Obviously, during potato harvest and potato planting, you're gonna have people that go in. During cabin season, if a, if a cabin needs help delivering a calf, you're gonna have somebody go in there. So I think it's, it's given that there will be some incidental human occupancy. But the whole thing with the electrical and plumbing system base was, well, if we now have bathrooms and, you know, heating and, you know, is it now more designed for human occupancy, have shelter of-
And I'm thinking too, is a caving facility is, a lot of times calves are born when it's really cold.
Mm-hmm.
And if you um, it's much safer to have a heater that is not like a little portable that
Yeah.
you plug in, and so just, I guess, you know, you don't wanna get into the situation of every instance or every possibility.
Yeah.
But I think it just goes back to really what is your intent?
Mm-hmm.
If you put a heater in a room to use to warm in calves, that doesn't mean that you're a bad person. It doesn't mean you're intending to live there.
Exactly.
I think, and any building that somebody erects, like they say they're putting up a garage. If they wanna cheat, they can cheat, and they can go back and put in a bathroom in their garage or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
But I think the, and then you still have to catch them. No matter what the situation is, but I think-
I saw you get a lot of garages with bathrooms nowadays, it's like everybody's garage has to have a half bathroom full bathroom in some places. But anyway, we know all that upfront.
Yeah, and that's-
You know, it's, it's easy enough to deal with.
That's one thing, but I think wherever you have, you're gonna have people who try to cheat.
Oh yeah.
And John uses the example of the, the Amish person that builds barn and then rents it out for RV storage. There's no way you can foresee that.
Oh, no.
And even these rules is not going to stop it.
Right.
But you also don't wanna stop good people from actually doing their business.
Mm-hmm.
And all this is, is a building permit. We're still getting taxes on the thing.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, they save a couple thousand dollars upfront. And a potato storage, you may not pay your amount upfront for your building permit, but you are still getting taxes on it at a commercial rate. And so I just don't wanna turn it into something where suddenly now we wanna classify it as something different because it's got plumbing.
Okay.
Or because it's got, do you understand where I'm coming from?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, I don't feel-
Randy, I'm gonna-
Go ahead.
I could weigh in on this. We find ourselves, paint ourselves into a corner, so my concern was the state statute and uh, how restrictive it was. And then did we as a county, in our building code and policy, become more restrictive than the state, and if it was appropriate? And uh, to talk about water in an unheated facility, you have an eighty year old or ninety year old sheep lamming facility that has running water in it, uninsulated, unheated. And it runs through to water the sheep. They put a thousand sheep in there for lamming. And they had to have water for it, they had little sheep. Not only that, the uh, herder had to be, slept on site, slept in the building, so they can get up throughout the night and check on the sheep and do their job. I don't think the intent was to prevent that, but it does create an issue as the code is currently written. I'm sure my facility was grandfathered in, but if I wanted to upgrade that facility for the purposes of lamming, most of the time, design the building for that, we want to be able to, a normal animal-
You don't love him?
Yes.
Why was with him up to that point?
I'm sure he, he's spoken.
Problem, sure. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, well, I'll switch back and forth to the phone if I have to. But anyhow, Randy, right now as it stands right now, this situation I just tried, would that be permitted under the code? Or is it only an animal shelter, not an animal husbandry facility?
I'm sorry, what? What was the question?
I'm gonna try this, I don't have too um-
Uh, animal husbandry versus animal shelter? Is that uh, is there a distinction?
Is that uh-
You guys didn't listen?
Randy, twice.
He's wondering if it's, if it'd be considered animal husbandry.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop off the computer. Can you hear me now?
And is a animal shelter different than an animal shelter?
I don't know, that's the first time I've, oh.
Sheep herder stayed in there, and that would be considered as an example of animal husbandry?
Yeah, okay.
And so, if, if it's a temporary husbandry within an animal shelter facility? Or are we getting too-
You know, John, I, I don't think I've ever had a conversation like that at the counter going over the building. We've never gotten that in depth, you know, to the-
Well, I, I'll give you an example, uh, Randy, I'm sorry for cutting you off, I'm having difficulties on it. Uh, Chain Johnson built a cat. And, and he ran into that issue when he built it. And part of the issue was separate from what he could have in there as far as plumbing electricity, and had to do as in a confined animal feeding operation, which is a totally separate issue that is governed somewhat by the federal government, as I understand. But he had a caddy barn, he had to have somebody in there, and he needed to have water available and electricity. So it didn't fall under just the standard livestock shelter where I've got a loaf of shit out there so my cattle can get in and out of the weather. He uses it, it's a closed building that he uses for caddy purposes. Where does that fall in the code?
Well, um, is your question, would that still be considered an agricultural building, or would that be subject to the building code?
That's my question, yes.
It's a good question. And um, maybe you ought to have Ryan weigh in on it, you know? I, um, I read the section in the statute a few minutes ago, I, I, hopefully you were able to hear me.
Yes, I did.
And um, you know, all these other little details or caveats, I'm not sure that we've ever even dove into, so to speak.
I understand that, and I can understand the dilemma. Uh, and I understand the concern that I've got a barn out here, regardless of how old it is, and I decided to put an apartment in it today.
Today.
Well, I'm doing that after the building code was adopted. So if I wanted to put a department in it, I would have to come to you and apply for a permit that would allow me to convert that to a residential facility.
Correct.
And we would have to follow whatever code requirements exist for, for that structure, for the whole structure, I'm assuming. But if I'm doing it for animal husbandry only, and I am now under modern day, I uh, the guy can't go outside to an outhouse, he has to use some sort of approved toilet facility. And I put that in that barn, which already has water and has had pre-building code days, has electricity pre-building code days, but I wanna put it in the restroom, and I wanna put in a water trough for the livestock. Uh, that's where we start getting into the gray area, I think. It becomes a bit of a judgment call. But as I understand it, you don't want people living in a structure that has not been inspected and approved under the building code. But it doesn't mean they can't work in there, for instance, in a potato warehouse. They do go work in there, even if it's just to clean up or run a forklift or something. Or a, a loader, uh. So I guess the question becomes, what are we trying to accomplish here? We wanna have safe buildings, as I'm assuming. And people aren't gonna be exposed to shoddy construction that might fall in on them.
Yeah, the, you know, the building code is all about minimum standards, you know, you uh, you can always do better. And many, many builders do better in many aspects. But the uh, the building code is all about minimum standards. And then the agricultural buildings we've been discussing today would be, you know, the state, state law, um, oh, you know, doesn't subject buildings for this purpose ex, you know, um, farm products, livestock, agricultural. What we read from the statute to that building code, they're still subject to taxes and still subject to zoning, um, you know, setbacks and things like that. They're not exempted from those things, but from the building code. Um, you know, where you were talking about the apartment inside the building, I mean, it does become tough if you have a, an existing building that was never subject to any inspection or co- uh, code compliance, to try to take a portion of that or attach to a portion of that a building that is, um, without getting into, you know, what about the old, you know, what about the existing, so? I really haven't had that come down the pipe per se, uh, but I can see where that would be pretty difficult to deal with.
Right, and it may just be, uh, the owner has to eat it. If I wanna turn my hundred year old barn, uh, the loft into an office slash apartment slash whatever, uh, I may have to bring that whole building in together. That might just be the way it is. But in the case of where we build the barn for a purpose that falls under the state exemption, the question, the gray line becomes, is it strictly, in this case, an animal shelter? Uh, product shelter, uh, farm equipment shelter, or is it being used for some other purpose? And then, if I had a potato- And then, if I had a potato warehouse, and I've emptied it out, and I wanna put my boat in there for a few months, but the principal purpose of the building is for potato storage, is that an issue? And we get into the building code, and we get into the code enforcement on use.
And John, can I correct your terminology there for a minute? We are not about potato warehouses, we're talking about potato sellers.
Yes, and I'm sorry about that, Suzanne. I use those terms interchangeably, it's my mistake.
So, John, here's the, here's the part, you know, where we get some days frustrated with. Um, you know, it's, you finally just go, well, I guess this is the way it is. But if somebody were to come in and apply for an agricultural building for a bulk potato storage, granted the ag permit, went out, setbacks are fine, yep, it's all good, looks, looks like an egg building to me. And come July or August, they park their boat or their camper or something in there. I do not have the time to go around and try to police something like that. Um, again, I think that we're reading maybe a little more than actually went into this form that we're talking about. It was just to prevent people skirting the rules or, you know. They intended to build a garage all along, but hey, I'm gonna call it an egg building so I can get the permit for fifty bucks and not have to get all these inspections and so on and so forth. That was the intent of the form. Um, so if, if a boat gets parked in a potato storage for a few months or something like that, you know, I'm sure it happens. It's, it's, we're not trying to, that's not what we're trying to prevent.
Okay, so the changes that I made on that, where it's in red?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have an issue with any of those changes?
So you wanna remove, okay. You changed horticulture to agriculture?
Yeah, horticulture is the improper term.
Okay. That might have been borrowed from somewhere, I don't know.
Yeah, that's just not proper terminology.
At least.
Except, um, the... And it also talks about, um, treating?
Yeah.
And I don't know what kind of a facility might treat, might just be a, a facility. However, you know, is, you do occasionally treat your potatoes while they're in storage? You might treat your, um, barley while it's in a grain bin? You can do that? So I wouldn't think that that is going outside of, and I can't imagine any, um, situation. I can't think of any agricultural situation where you would treat a product as a, the processing thing where you would have to have people in there? Then, yes, you can put chemicals on your potatoes in storage, but that doesn't change the nature of the building.
Again, probably language that was hijacked from maybe another county, I, you know, I, I...
Or maybe another area or another state where they may do something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
But I, that's why I'm not reading that word, because it doesn't make any sense.
I, I personally am not so invested in this form that need that bothers.
Okay.
If everybody feels like that's how you would like it to read, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. And, um, the plumbing facilities, are you stuck on that, or does that...
The, the whole intent was more like, um, oh, I don't know. You know, is it just a shelter if you put a bathroom out there? Well, the ba- the animals aren't using the bathroom, you know, the human beings are. But I could understand the need, like John said, for, for maybe water, you mentioned a sink. You know, I can see that. Most cases, you would need in the wintertime to have a building to protect the plumbing from freezing.
Right.
So I don't know how working with the sheep shed. A lot of times we get to frost-free hydrants, we never even question those, I mean, yeah, to fill the water, you know.
Well, and I, I just think too, is the way agriculture is changing, and the requirements and the gap requirements and, and that kind of thing, that I can see that becoming just a standard practice.
Well, it is, it is a, it is a changing world. And we should review what we're doing periodically, because we're, we're doing the same thing we did ten years ago. But we do things to change, you know? But we review our fees every now and then, because it costs, you know, things cost money, but um...
Well, and I, so, um, in addition, I think I would probably like to remove the, all of the statements about the electricity and the, and the plumbing.
Well, I will leave that up to the board.
So, okay, but we wanted you involved in the, in the process, and so...
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah. Um...
But if you're not married to any of it, we can...
I, I'm not, again, I, I know what the intent was, and we're wrong with that. So do we need to try to describe every possible scenario that an agricultural building could have and then try to, you know, overanalyze it? I don't think so. I, I think the intent is, tag, tag, fine, we're not, you know. Um, but if it's not, then you're subject to the...
And I'm also of the belief that if you have less words, that, and more vague, then you just, okay, let's look at the purpose. And it's a little bit easier to, instead of looking at every little thing, that's my thought.
Yeah.
That work for you?
Works for me.
Okay.
Randy, I don't wanna beat this to death, but we know this is an area where people are always gonna push the envelope. Constantly. And on the Shane Johnson case, the complaint came before you, I believe, from a neighbor who said he was putting in a feedlot, which has its own set of regulations. Uh, particularly the confined animal feeding operation.
Actually, I haven't had any complaints, but it probably went to land use.
It may have gone to land use, I don't know where it went. But in any event, that happened, uh, what Shane Johnson's using for or not, I, I can't speak to that, I don't know. Until that complaint came in. But I know it's easy to transition from the intended to not be there. And people are gonna try to push the envelope. And no, you don't have the time or the staff to run around and do that kind of code enforcement. But if we can write the language, solidify course with state intent, you clearly understand the intent. But, uh, make sure that we're not being discriminatory, so we don't have to read this and this every time somebody comes up. When you're not here for enforcement or changes, and they decide that this law is written, entitles them to go in and try to shut some operation down, whatever. Uh, I was gonna suggest that when we write this, or if we rewrite it, and course with state law and law, that we talk not only about the intended use, but the continuing, uh, percentage of use. So if a potato storage facility is used sixty percent of the time for potato storage, maybe that's what we say, that's the majority of the time, for that purpose. But they're sitting there empty, and you're storing a motorcycle, but whatever, and they're, we're not picking at it, we're not gonna spell it out. And we can cover it by saying the primary use, the predominant use is what we, what was stated on the fitback application. If, if there's some way to incorporate that kind of language. And then, no, we don't have the time and manpower to run around and enforce it and count days, on how many days the motorcycle was sitting in there. But it, we gotta, we have to give you the authority to do, to follow the intent of the law. That, that's important, that you're provided with that. But we don't want it overly restrictive, so that we get into these kind of net noi conversations. And things like the electricity required, we know that a potato storage facility requires a considerable amount of electricity, whereas a loafing shed just may require light bulbs, so you can see at night. And so it's kind of based on what the use is. If I turn that loafing shed into an equipment repair shop, at that point, we've crossed the line. Or what, you know, whatever we might wanna use it for, right? Seal off the front and rent it out as a short-term rental. Whatever people try to do. I understand that we have those kinds of issues, but I think we can, we can incorporate language about the intended use when the permit was applied for or approved, and the predominant use. Something along that line, if we have to change the form. I'm assuming that the form was a county created document.
Yeah, I have it in a Word file.
Okay, and, uh, it, is that kind of a guidance document?
Yeah, again, it's, um, I refer to it as a tool in the toolbox. Um, again, go back to the intent, the reason we developed the form was to try to prevent, um, individuals from, yeah, abusing the exemption by, by, um, you know, coming in and asking for an egg building and had no intentions of abusing it for agriculture. And, um, you know, had, had some other purpose in mind, just to skirt the fees and the building code compliance.
Sure, that makes sense, and I assume we have building codes primarily for health and safety.
Right, so that, that's the, that's the gist of it. I mean, there was no more thought than that. Uh, again, we may have hijacked some language from another community or county. Don't know, can't remember. Um, tried to incorporate some words that kind of follow the statute language. But, uh, certainly, these, these things that you guys have brought to light, probably never really crossed my mind. You know, it's either ag or it isn't. Um, if the gray areas, the gray area, if you have your boat in there, nobody's gonna drive around taking, get your boat out of there in the summertime, it, you know. Um, it's, it's more to keep the willful abuse of, or, or trying to take advantage of the county, I guess, was the intent of it.
Certainly. So, uh, Suzanne, you proposed language to the, to our code, basically, which is somewhat reflected in the form that people sign when they say they're building an egg building. That's the form you have, Randy. Did you actually sign, sign that to say we will comply with the requirements of this form?
Yeah, it's, it's, the form deals with the use of the building. I, I intend to use it for ag, and I understand that's, I'm, I'm exempted from the building code regulations. And so the use is gonna be ag, it's not gonna be for other things. And we have that discussion, like I said, trying to have that interview at the counter, not, not to be mean or nosy, just to try to get things steered in the right direction.
Well, can I come in and get a fifty-dollar permit to build an ag building? Uh, that's pretty generous on the county's part.
By the state?
No, the fifty dollars, you, you set the fee. Yeah, I mean, I'll even refer to it as a zoning permit, because that's really what it is. But yeah, you gotta do the building permit to give it to the assessor to get it on the tax roll, et cetera. But fifty dollars, that, that's set by you all, and you have that ability to change that. I think in some cases, if you're talking about, you know, two hundred and fifty square foot loafing shed, fifty dollars is probably blank. You're talking about a multi-million dollar potato, bulk potato storage facility? Maybe fifty dollars is overly generous, but... So we get, we get a flat fee, you could look at doing by the square foot, or, you know, you could look at other ways.
But that really doesn't, that doesn't address the real concern about, that Suzanne has brought forward, that she would be signing a document that said, uh, no electricity and no plumbing. I'm not even sure that's on the document, not language that it sounds like.
Yeah, minimal.
And to me, that would make me very uncomfortable to come and apply for a building permit s- and sign this document, when I know I'm gonna have more electricity in that building than, than the courthouse does.
Yeah, yeah, so it says minimal electricity and no indoor plumbing facilities. Yeah, maybe you could say plumbing fixtures, I don't know.
And I don't know. But honestly, I don't, I don't think there'd be a problem as regarding the statute. You just eliminated the plumbing and electricity statement altogether, do you? As long as it goes by what the statute says, are you okay however we change it?
Yeah, my concern is the use, the use and the abuse, so at least, if this, if this language, again, I don't wanna overthink it, but yeah, this, this language is not set still, it is, I, I don't feel that strongly either way. All we're trying to do is, you know...
And I understand the intent, but I just, I don't wanna put it, because I have a really hard time personally if I have to sign a document where I feel like I'm applying on that document. And if I know I'm gonna put in a building that has more electricity than the entire county buildings, that bothers me to sign a document that says minimal electricity.
Well, and I, I, I think that is an oversight when we were doing this. I think we were envisioning, you know, electric, electrical appliances, and, you know, like you would have at home. And not, not the fact that a potato storage requires a lot of electricity, it'll take...
Right.
Clearly an oversight.
Well, that's fine, I just wanna correct the oversight. I'm not here to torture you.
Yeah.
I just want you to know that. I'm not here to torture you or say anything.
And I, I promise, nobody was thinking of sheep herding, uh, husbandry. I forget what it was called now with the, yeah, um, was, wasn't even thought of.
Well, and that's the thing, I just wanted to kind of correct an oversight. I'm not here to torture you, you know that, right?
Yes, absolutely.
If I did, I'd make you stand up really fast.
Yeah, just make me walk around. That's torture.
Oh, Randy, this document, this form, I assume that isn't something you even had to run by the commissioners when that was executed, right?
No, actually, it was, yeah.
Okay.
I discussed with, there's a fact, I believe at the time Bill Dunn reviewed it, gave this stamp of okay on it, and...
We've raised some other issues, and maybe we can just slightly revise the form to be broad enough to cover the concerns, but narrow enough to address the abuses.
So would you like me to send you the form in digital form to...
I, I created that.
Well, I can, I, I can send you a current copy.
I just, I just took the current copy and I turned it into an Adobe document, so I could, 'cause I, I made it where I could turn it around.
Okay.
So I'm good. I'll just, I'll just go ahead and...
So I was just offering to send it to you digitally, so you guys could play with the wording, whatever, um...
Randy, it won't cost you anything to send that out, will it?
Pardon me?
It won't cost you anything to send out that form to us.
I'd be glad to email it to you this afternoon.
That'd be great. Because I have some thoughts on it too. I have this, I mean Suzanne brought it to our attention because she has specific concerns. But obviously, those of us that are in other forms of agriculture have concerns of our own. And, uh, we'd like to make sure that, uh, we can cover those to the extent possible. And some of it, we may just have to suck it up and know we can't do what we thought we were gonna do. I don't know, we'll find out. But we could get back to you and you could revise the form. If it has to be approved by the commissioners, sorry for the extra work. I know you've got other things going on in your life, so you're probably not gonna have a lot of time to spend on this in the next week or so. So, uh...
Our, our department, I, it, it's, it's complete madness right now. I, I can't believe what, what all's coming in.
I saw your report.
Right up Wednesday, what all we got going, but it's, uh, yeah, between that and, you know, my medical issue right now, it's pretty hectic.
So I wouldn't wanna, personally, I wouldn't wanna burden you with this. Suzanne, are you comfortable that we've introduced the topic and that we can work on this and maybe come up with a definitive answer down the road a little bit? Not push it down indefinitely, but come to resolution. But I saw with the building permit schedule, you took in five times the normal fees last month, as I saw on building permits.
Right, right now, I've, I've got, I had two more new house plans come in today. The, um, Sky High facility came in last week, so I'm, that's gonna take a lot of my time. Um, so yeah, it's...
Would that be okay?
So can we do this on the fly, by email, if, uh, if Suzanne makes the corrections and you, if you three like it, I can review it, we can talk, or is, is that good?
That would work for me, Randy.
Thank you. Thank you for your ability to adapt to my whims.
Yeah, well, uh, I mean, that's easy enough.
Okay.
We can work that in.
Okay, I will, I will go through and, um, probably not a whole lot more than just trying, taking what's red and turning it black and...
Okay, so you're, you're gonna revise it, you're gonna share it with Gene and John and myself, and then we can chat?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or even, we can just do it all by email? Or even, we can just do it all by email and say, this is what I don't like, this is what I do like.
That's what I was thinking, do it by email.
I think so. And then you don't have to actually show up, and you don't, or get up from your other chair.
Okay. I don't know.
Okay, so are we comfortable with the plan going forward then?
Yes.
Gene, what about you, you've been ominously quiet.
Oh, I'm fine with it, I think it's a great plan, we need to get on with it, so...
Okay, Randy, you're okay with that, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you can hobble back to your office then, if you want.
I'll hobble back there, and I'll send it out to Trish and you three, and let you, let you tinker with it.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay.
Do you need some help getting it through, etc., people leave you alone?
I'm hoping I can get my MRI and find out what's wrong and go forward.
Okay, do we have anything else to cover in this work session?
No.
Trish has nothing, Gene, you have anything?
Those are ungood.
Okay, so am I. I guess this meeting stands adjourned then.
Yes.
See ya.
See ya.
I guess my internet came up just in time.